I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held March 6th, 2012 at 4:00 PM at the City Council Chambers in Cottonwood, Arizona. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowling?
Here.
Councilmember Olinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Howdige?
Here.
Councilmember Norman?
Here.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pfeiffer?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here. Thank you very much. Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have Marjorie McKinnon with us this evening to lead the pledge.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a little certificate for you, and I'll give that to you when we do the proclamation at the same time. All right. Thank you very much for leading the pledge. The next item is a brief summary of current events by mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, just to advise that the city has taken over the operation of the Camp Comptor site up on Mingus Avenue. And the hours will be Monday through Saturday, 8 to 4:30, which is about an increase of 20 hours a week. And we have two part-time employees we hired to provide service up there, and we are taking cash, check, and credit cards. And for right now, the prices are going to remain the same.
Okay.
And also, the bike trail running from 8th or 10th to 12th Street was worked on over the past two weekends. It's an alignment of Elm Street. The first week with assistance of Yavapai County probation volunteers under the direction of Police Commander Isinga helped us out. This last weekend, work was done by Yavapai College Fire Class and their fire instructor from Sedona and firefighter volunteers from the area, including Cottonwood Jerome and Verde Valley firefighters. And I think I sent some pictures around to the, maybe the mayor saw them, but I'll get them out to the rest of the council. They really did a nice job with the trail. And last but not least, Matforce is handing out its annual education material to all the sixth graders throughout Yavapai County. It's an educational flyer on illicit substances and substance abuse, and there's a lot of opportunity for kids and parents to learn about the dangers of some of the drugs that are out there running around. So with that, Madam Mayor?
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, Vice Mayor?
Dr. Cattelico and I went in two days. We signed up eight doctors for that website so they can check on the drugs people take when they come into their office. And that was real exciting, to get at least eight of them. And then I believe the hospital is making it mandatory for doctors there to sign up also.
So this just means that the pain medications, prescription drugs that some people go from doctor to doctor?
They tell shop and doctor shop, and this should help eliminate a lot of that if they use the system. Great.
Good. Thank you.
Really happy with that.
Thank you for your donation of time in that area.
That was fun. And then, another fun thing I did with you on Friday, we read for Dr. Seuss Day, and I went to two of the classes, and then the mayor went to two others. And then after I was done reading for Dr. Seuss Day, I went with my granddaughter, who is a teacher at Cottonwood Elementary, and surprised my two great-granddaughters in their classes, and we read to them also. So I got to read four times on Friday to the little people of the valley. It's so much fun to see those kids in their jammies and reading and excited about books. It was a lot of fun. And then today wasn't quite as much fun, but I went down with the chamber and to Legislature Day for the Chamber of Commerce's. And they filled us in on some of the bills, which is too lengthy to go into now, but they'll be, they're on our iPads, and Kylan, Doug, and Diane, Mary Ann keep us up to date on all those anyway. But I just got back from meeting with them and the governor this afternoon.
Great. That's it? Yeah, we really want to keep economic development at the forefront of whatever we're doing and whatever the legislature's doing, too. Councilmembers? Okay. For my report tonight, I do have some other things, but I would like to start it out with doing something in memory of Dwayne Kirby. Dwayne Kirby was a council member for four years, and he just passed away, and I would just like to share his obituary tonight. Dwayne D. Kirby, 82, of Cottonwood, passed away on Saturday, March 3rd, 2012. He was born on August 29th, 1929, in Rockford, Illinois, to Joseph Anleti Kirby. Dwayne attended Concordia River Forest School for four years. He served as second lieutenant in the Army during the Korean War. Dwayne was self-employed, working in broadcasting, owner of KuID Radio from 1966 to 1979. He was a Yavapai County supervisor. He worked for the Camp Verde sanitation district and an RV park in Montrose, Colorado, and served on the Cottonwood City Council. He was a member of Faith Lutheran Church and became president, treasurer, and elder. Dwayne enjoyed golfing and fishing. He was a loving husband, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather. Dwayne is survived by his wife of 62 years, Charlene, sons Kevin Kirby of Cottonwood, Keith Kirby, whose wife is Annette of Cottonwood, and Kelly Kirby, whose wife is Shelley of Cottonwood, daughters Karen Getman, husband Wally of Hutchinson, Kansas, and Kristy Aston, whose husband is Greg of Clarkdale, as well as 12 grandchildren and 17 great-grandchildren. We'll just wait a second. A visitation will be held on Friday, March 9th, 2012. We'll wait till the noise stops here. Okay. A visitation will be held on Friday, March 9th, 2012, at Westcott Funeral Home in Cottonwood from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. A service will be held on Saturday, March 10th, 2012, at Faith Lutheran Church at 2021 East First Street in Cottonwood at 2:00 PM. I just would like to share that I so thoroughly enjoyed working with Dwayne. He was great to work with on the council. He had a passion for service, whether it was in the city council or through his church. And he really accomplished a lot. His interests, he was really interested in streets and roads, and even though his health was failing, if we had an item on the agenda about a street or a road, even after he wasn't on the council, you would see him here to talk about that and remind the council of our vision, which includes sidewalks, bike lanes, and things that we've all worked on. And so, we'll really miss him, and if everybody would like to just observe a moment of silence, I would appreciate that. Thank you all very much. Okay. Since the last time we had a council meeting, we had the mayor's community forum, and we had Tom Whitmer as a speaker. And we had it here in the council chambers, and there were 20 people in the room. So compared to some of our coffee talks, where we're trying to get the public involved, and we don't see a whole lot of people attending those, we kind of thought we'd take a new tact and try this. And of course, I think it's a topic, everybody wants to talk about water. And Tom was sharing what was going on statewide and how that impacted Cottonwood and the Verde Valley, but he really wanted to just do questions and answers, so we kind of just ended up, there were a lot of questions, and he answered them. So I think it's something that we could do again because there is a lot of interest in it. And the Vice Mayor and I attended Marshall Tolson's Eagle Scout event. He was honored as an Eagle Scout. He met all of his badges and all of his work to do that on Saturday, February 25th. And last week, on Thursday, I gave a State of the City address to Rotary, and I plan on doing that citywide, probably June, July, or whenever it is that we do those kinds of things. I attended the annual meeting of the Friends of the Verde River Greenway, and this group has added, I believe it's three or four jobs, it might be four, to the local economy through a Walton Family Foundation grant. And they are going to, their main purpose is to eradicate invasive species from the riparian area. And in honor of Dr. Seuss's birthday, the Vice Mayor and I did go to school, and I read to Mrs. Newman and Mrs. Edwards' classes, and I also had green eggs and ham. The Vice Mayor watched me have green eggs and ham. She didn't, she had already eaten breakfast that day.
Had my smoothie earlier.
Right. On Inside Cottonwood, I interviewed John Rasmussen of the Yavapai County Water Advisory Committee. Members of the public may watch this and other interviews on Cable 1 TV, Channel 2, or wwwvertivallietv.com. The videos are also available on YouTube as well, under vertivallietv.com. And I actually found out about all of this on Facebook today when I clicked, and there was my interview with John on my page. So that's how I learned about it. I was interviewed by Nancy Gottschak. She worked in our community garden quite a bit before she went back to get her master's degree at NAU, and she's doing her thesis on local agriculture and the barriers to growing food locally. And she said that she was pleasantly surprised. She interviewed people on the cat bus and in front of grocery stores and all over the community. And she said that people really are interested in this topic, which surprised her. So she was glad about that. My husband and I went, were in the Sedona St. Patrick's Day Parade on Saturday, and it was really a nice parade. Sedona does a great job with that. On Sunday, last Sunday, the Friends of Flagstaff and the Flagstaff City Manager Kevin Burke came down to Cottonwood, and Dan Luder was working that day, and he gave them a presentation on the riverfront reclamation plant. And members of their community are very interested in what we're doing with our plant, and they're especially interested in removing pharmaceuticals from the waste stream, but they're also interested in solar and our educational component for the plant. Yesterday on March 5th, I attended the Greater Arizona Mayor's Meeting in Phoenix, and our representative Karen Phan was there, as well as about five other representatives and one senator from Yuma. And we just basically, we had an update from Ken Strobeck of the League of Cities and Towns before we started, and he let us know what bills were being considered. And basically, our message is, is we ask them not to approve the budget if they didn't remove the sweep of MVD funds, the Motor Vehicle Division funds, and the ADWR, or the Arizona Department of Water Resources. What do you want to call that? It's not a sweep, it's just that cities and towns have to pay that. And the unfair thing about that is that no one outside of cities and towns has to pay that. So we're just trying to get that more balanced and more fair, more evened out. Okay. Tomorrow, the Vice Mayor will be attending, I think, the Cottonwood Oak Creek School District Soup with the superintendent. And then I believe, these are meetings that I was supposed to attend, and I have other things going on, and I believe that Councilmember Norman will be attending the Homeless Coalition Meeting at the Verde Valley Guidance Clinic at 2:00 PM on the 7th. That's tomorrow, Wednesday. And that's my report to council and the public. All right. The next item is Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, per ARS 3843102H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak this evening? If not, we'll close the floor to the public. Our next item is a presentation by Marjorie McKinnon regarding the Blue Ribbon Campaign.
Well, I'm Marjorie McKinnon. I've never done this before, so bear with me. I'm the founder of the Lamplighter Movement. It's an international movement for recovery from child sexual abuse, and we have 84 chapters in 13 countries. 18 of our chapters are in Africa. We have two in women's prisons, and we're trying to get all of the women's prisons having a lamplighter chapter, so that's kind of an ongoing thing. Excuse me. Most people are not really aware of how severe the problem of child abuse is. As a survivor of child sexual abuse, myself and the mother of three daughters who were sexually abused, I can attest to the fact that child abuse is one of the biggest problems that our nation faces. We need to bring this knowledge into all of the homes, all of the churches, all of schools, everywhere we can think of, to bring more awareness into our community. Our children today are the leaders of tomorrow, and they're also the parents of tomorrow. And if they come from a home of abuse, they will most likely pass that on to their children. We need to make sure they are raised with no abuse in their life at all. Here's a few national statistics to show you how severe the problem is. The number of child deaths per day to child abuse and neglect has risen from, since 1998, from 1.3 to over 5. In 2009, approximately 3.3 million child abuse reports were made, and a report of child abuse is made every 10 seconds. There is a place on the internet that shows you what the costs are of child abuse in Arizona. It's all broken down, but the estimated amount of money spent on child abuse in 2007 in Arizona is over $518 million. And in 2007, the estimated total annual cost of child abuse and neglect in the United States was over $103 billion. Those are kind of scary stats. In 1983, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed that April was the first National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Since then, child abuse and neglect awareness activities have been promoted across the country through April, during April each year. The Lamplighter Movement is spearheading the Blue Ribbon Campaign here in the Verde Valley. I'll give you a little bit of history on this. In 1989, the Blue Ribbon Campaign to prevent child abuse began as a Virginia grandmother's tribute to her grandson who died of child abuse. She tied a blue ribbon to the antenna of her car as a way to remember him and to alert her community to the tragedy of child abuse. The Blue Ribbon Campaign has since expanded across the country. Many people wear blue ribbons each April in memory of those who have died as a result of child abuse and in support of the efforts to prevent child abuse. The Lamplighter Movement will be placing these containers, we've made up these cute little containers, through out of Cottonwood and some in Sedona as well. They contain little blue ribbons on a little business card that shows the child abuse hotline number and also my email number, in case anybody wants to get ahold of me. And we are going to put them in food and drugstores, in other major businesses, including beauty salons. And we also have the Verde Valley, these flyers for the Verde Valley. And we would like to flood the Verde Valley with these flyers. We're going to put them in all the medical offices and therapist offices and the Verde Valley Medical Clinic and the Guidance Center and any community organizations who are working with child abuse, such as CPS. So that will all get underway at the end of March, and we'll drop all these containers around the community. We have somebody working in the Sedona area. We have, we're calling all of the churches in Verde Valley, including Camp Verde and Sedona and Cottonwood, all of them, they're all getting called. We're asking them to post a bulletin in their newsletter and also put up flyers. So we're setting all those up there. And we're going to just be going around and doing everything we can to get the ribbons out and to get the flyers out, and it's a big job. So if anybody wants to volunteer to help us, we would really appreciate it. And you can find the Lamplighter Movement at www.the lamplighters.org. And my email is marjorie@the lamplighters.org if anybody needs to email me for any reason. I'm also in the phone book, so I appreciate you letting me speak on this, and I hope that we do some good with it and get a lot of people involved.
All right. Thank you very much. And we do have a proclamation that I'm going to read on this issue. Whereas President Ronald Reagan in the year 1982 declared by presidential proclamation that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and whereas in the spring of 1989, a Virginia grandmother named Bonnie began the Blue Ribbon Campaign as a tribute to her grandson who died at the hands of his mother's abusive boyfriend. And whereas since that time, concerned citizens all over the country have worn the blue ribbon as a symbol of the need to prevent child abuse and neglect. And whereas the Lamplighter Movement, in conjunction with the City of Cottonwood, seeks to have every citizen in every business, every church, every school, every hospital, every home in Cottonwood, everywhere the eye can see, wear a blue ribbon and to have all businesses have a basket of blue ribbons available. And whereas the Blue Ribbon serves as a constant reminder to fight for protection of our children, our most precious gift of all, and whereas there is still so much work to do to address the most serious problem, we can all do our part, our small part, by wearing a blue ribbon, putting one on our car, giving one to our friends, and telling them what the blue ribbon means to you. Now therefore, I Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Cottonwood in order to draw public attention to this issue and to commend the solemn observance to all people of the goodwill in this city. So Marjorie, if you'd like to come up? On behalf of my colleagues on the City Council, we would like to present this certificate to you for saying the Pledge of Allegiance without error. Yeah, we would like to give you this proclamation to people for your members. Thank you for all you're doing for the children in our area. We really appreciate it.
He's the photographer for this Verde Valley area. He comes around everywhere and takes pictures.
Thanks again, Marjorie, for all your work. I appreciate you. The next item is presentation of the 2011 Community Citizenship Fire and Life Safety Award, Verde Valley Kids Against Hunger. Kim Gould and Karen Freeman, chief.
Madam Mayor, council, I'd like Fire Marshal Rick Conturge to come up and assist me in this process. This is his brainchild program, started about three years ago, whereby he spends a tremendous amount of time out in the community, working with businesses and people throughout the community, and it was his idea to maybe recognize some of the extraordinary efforts that people put forth in the community. And the first award we want to do tonight is the 2011 Community Outreach Award. This year's award goes to Kim Gould and Karen Freeman and their Verde Valley Kids Against Hunger Program. Verde Valley Kids Against Hunger is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization whose mission is to significantly reduce the number of hungry children in the USA and to feed God-starving children throughout the world. The Verde Valley section is Arizona's first-
We'll get everyone up here for you. We'll give you an opportunity.
-is Arizona's first satellite packaging site. They assemble local teams to package meals and prepare them for distribution. In their first year of operation, 2011, they packaged over 74,000 meals. 15% of these meals, these packaged meals, stayed local for distribution to needy throughout the Old Town Mission, the Cornville Beaver Creek, Central Arizona, and Sedona Food Banks, the Harts for the Homeless, the Backpack Program, and through other community-based help programs. Some of the packaged meals have also been distributed south of our border to help those in need in Mexico. The other 85% of these packages, packaged meals have been distributed throughout Haiti. These two ladies have made multiple trips to Haiti before and after the catastrophic earthquake to provide medical assistance and distribute packaged meals. The next goal for the Verde Valley Kids Against Hunger is to triple their efforts and package 200,000 meals in 2012. It's almost a threefold increase. Because of their compassionate efforts to help those less fortunate in our community and in Haiti, the Cottonwood Fire Department wishes to present to Kim Gould and Karen Freeman and the Verde Valley Kids Against Hunger with our 2011 Community Outreach Award. And I'd like the mayor and vice mayor maybe to come up and give the presentation.
Every time we give this award out, it's always to somebody that's really outstanding within the community. There's a lot of people deserving of this award, but, and we know that they don't do it for their own recognition, but they do such a great job. There's so many people in this community, and these two and this organization have done an outstanding job, and we wanted to recognize that.
Well, we thank you very much for recognizing us. I'd also like to recognize our board members that are here tonight, Dan Engler, Bob Shimko, and the absent members, Amy Wilson and Bonnie Shimko, and also our event coordinator, Beth Katie. Thank you. Without them, we couldn't do this, obviously. We did package almost 74,000 meals last year, and we are on our way to packaging 200,000 meals this year. That's been done with the generosity of many individuals in this community, businesses, churches, the hospital, the newspaper. So going forward, we just hope to partner with lots more people, and our goal is to eventually package a million meals every year in this community, so we need all your help. help. Thank you.
I have to take the picture. One of your photographers is already here. I see how much work he does, all of those big stacks of ready around. Are we a little bit, we need to go a little bit closer? Right? Are we close enough now? Well, we would just like to say thank you very much. I just talked one time, but it was so much fun. We have a lot of young kids from the schools helping. You ladies are just amazing. Thank you for all you're doing for the community. Chief, send it to me, to me for recognition. Thank you.
One more to go. Chief says we have one more.
I think right behind the head there is the one for the commercial occupancy fire and life safety.
Oh, okay.
We just flipped it in.
Oh, that, oh, actually, that's the second one listed on the agenda. So it's, that's the order.
This, Madam Mayor and Counsel, this award is our 2011 Commercial Occupancy Fire and Life Safety Award. And this year's award goes to Walmart, and I'd like Mark to step up, co-manager with Walmart. Walmart, as you know, is a large commercial business, and it occupies over 212,000 square feet and employs over 400 people in our community. They've got an extremely high volume of commercial traffic every day, and they have several fire hazards, high fire hazard areas, including the automotive center, the garden center, the McDonald's restaurant, as well as large volumes of combustibles and flammable products throughout the store. Walmart has an exceptional safety record as it relates to fire and hazard risk reduction. And the Cottonwood Fire Department's inspections over the past year have found no serious fire code violations. The organization shows to be very committed to overall safety throughout their occupancy. They have a very active, proactive fire and life safety program and an in-house, active in-house safety team. Because of their ongoing commitment to fire and life safety in their occupancy, the Cottonwood Fire Department wishes to present Walmart with our 2011 Commercial Business Fire and Safe, Fire and Life Safety Award. Madam Mayor.
Okay. So do you want us to help you, to assist you?
The manager, Jason Paris, is unable to attend tonight. We're going to present the assistant manager, the plaque, but we're also going to present this to their employees at a later date, maybe next week, so they're the root of all this, the employees.
Walmart is just a great community partner in so many ways. I mean, they help with, they just never ask for any recognition. You never hear them requesting recognition. They're just really amazing business. So we just want to, from our fire department and our council, present this to you. And thank you for all you do, and sorry Jason couldn't be here, but we're just happy to have you here tonight.
Well, he would be here because he's at a business meeting with Walmart, and I'll make sure that associates know that you've received this and, as you said, back home on the operations.
Absolutely.
And everything, running the stores, they've just got every firm work, the bridge that we have, the reasoning.
Madam Mayor and Counsel, on behalf of the Cottonwood Fire Department, we appreciate you giving us the opportunity to make these presentations publicly for what we feel are significant contributors to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your work, recognizing folks who deserve that, deserve to be recognized. All right. The next item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of 2:2112. I read those over, and they seemed just fine. Do I hear a motion?
I move we approve the minutes for February 21st, 2012.
Second. Councilmember Norman made the motion. The Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items on the agenda are listed, are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Item number 11 is old business. There is none tonight. Item number 12 is consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is contract extension with Traffic Safety, Inc. for the city's street striping services. And I'm going to pull this item off for discussion as we do have a citizen who wishes to comment. So Mr. Scott, want to come up and?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Morgan Scott, Development Services Operations Manager. Last year, the city procured a contract with Traffic Aid out of Prescott Valley to do biannual street striping, and that contract allowed for a one-year extension. We asked the contractor if they wanted to move forward with that one-year extension. I believe the letters in your packets in which they wanted to move forward with the same price, although I believe the contract allowed them a 3% increase. They did not wish to move forward with the 3% increase, but rather just move forward with the same price, and that's why we're bringing this forward to the council tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. And Mr. Bob Alafant wanted to comment on this item.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor and Counsel, Bob Alafant, 3:30 Desperado Drive, Arizona. I would like to just ask some questions. I think I have four, maybe five questions about this striping contract. And the first questions will focus specifically on A.DAT 708, which is referenced in the contract itself. In particular, A.DAT 708, Section 11. Question is, it sets out a general requirement that the city engineer do a visual rating on existing painting after 180 days. If it's possible, I would like to know what the visual rating on the painting by this company was after 180 days of the last painting effort. There is also a section in 708. It's 708 2.01E1. Talks about the colors that are used in street painting and tested against federal standards. I'm wondering if the city did test the colors that were used against federal test standards on this last painting. Three, just in general, what other tests did the city run to ensure that the quality of paint used in the striping in the contract with this company met with the provisions of A.DAT 708 during the past 12 months? Finally, the contract itself specifies in Section 8, 21 specific streets. So I can clarify my understanding of Section 8. First, are these the only streets in which striping will occur, paint will occur? Second, some of these streets appear, and I may be wrong about this, have been very recently painted. Does this contract anticipate repainting the very recently painted, painted streets? And, well, finally, it relates to the first question, why were several streets apparently left off this list of 21? So those are my questions, and I would ask that, if possible, citizens could have some clarification on those points. Thank you.
Did you get the list?
Madam Mayor and Counsel, if it pleases the council, because there was quite an extensive list of questions that we weren't provided prior to the meeting, I'd ask if we can respond to councilmen writing and forward a copy to Mr. Alafant. And I believe that way we can answer these questions properly and put the detail and thought to them that need to be.
I think that was a lot of questions that, yeah, would be nice if you could, like, forward those before the meeting too, so that they could research that. If you want an answer on really so much detail in a meeting, you know, it's just difficult. Mr. Pratt?
Seems to me that those questions and answers should go on our website at some point too, so everyone in the community can read them, because there are people here who are interested and are watching us who are interested.
Possibly, we should discuss this and have these in a meeting also, a meeting format.
I'd be fine with that. Revisit it in another meeting?
Yeah. If we're going to direct staff to go out and research this and bring it, and we should have it presented to the council, you know, that replies to the questions.
That would be a good idea.
Is there time to do that? Is there's time to bring it back on the 20th without impacting the contract?
We can bring those back. Most of the questions don't really impact the contract, but I want to give a proper answer. Do some research, I know. If it pleases the council, I'll get the exact questions from the clerk tomorrow and we'll start researching the engineering.
Okay, so you get the exact questions from the city clerk? Okay. All right, great. So we'll, I guess I'll make a motion to table this item until the 20th. So the mayor made the motion, Councilmember Pratt seconded it. All in favor? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item number 13, new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Okay. Approval of a short-term hangar lease agreement form and authorization to allow city staff to lease Hangar B at the Cottonwood Airport for short-term uses. Mr. Scott?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Morgan Scott again. As you may remember, last summer, the city's airport fixed base operator left contract with the city, leaving Hangar B open and unused since that time. Since that's happened, there's been no mechanic on the airfield to do routine maintenance and annual maintenance, which is required for pilots. What this contract will do is allow the city to rent that space out to pilots or mechanics just for a short-term time period to get an annual done or have routine maintenance done, just until the city can procure a contract for mechanic services at the airport. At that time, that mechanic will take use of Hangar B, but this will allow a, fill the need for a temporary time period. This contract, as you can see, it addresses all necessary insurance requirements, financial requirements. In fact, we went ahead and we listed not only the airport manager, but also the finance director and the risk management director, all as signers, just to verify that everything has been taken care of, both finance and insurance.
All right. Mr. Pratt?
I was just going to say, yeah, the contract looks very complete. There is no cost with this, and it does serve our airport pilots who we're trying to encourage to use the area, and it would be crazy to have them have to go out of the area for this maintenance, which is required by the Federal Aviation Administration, I know. They have no choice but to do it. So I think this is one of those-
No brainers?
No brainers.
All right. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the floor to the public. And Mr. Pratt? I entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the short-term lease agreement form and allow city staff to lease Hangar B for short-term uses.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion. Mr. Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Claims and adjustments.
Will we pay the claims?
Mr. Linsky made the motion. The Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Five seconds.
All right. The mayor read the motion. The Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor? Any opposed? We're adjourned.